Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, November 6th at 6:00 PM. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes it has.
Please call the roll.
Edo.
Here.
Eliason.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Humberger.
Saginaw.
Here.
Weenhop.
Here.
We have a form.
All right, tonight we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Webster Stanley students Katie Berger and Erin Farina. If you please stand and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag is right over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank you both for coming and waiting in for a Pledge of Allegiance. And Erin, there's a certificate for you. Thank you both very much. Oh, and we should let you know that meetings can't go on the wild, so you're not required to say anything. All right, next, board administrative reports. I have nothing on the president's report, superintendent's report.
Yes, and I believe we're ready with going through the good news report from the superintendent for today. First of all, the Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West worked together to collect for the American Cancer Society. As you know, I'm tied to the North and West game, a football game of this fall. Decision was made to collaborate as opposed to compete, and we're really celebrating that collaboration during the week of October 7th. Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West staffs and student bodies collected donations for the American Cancer Society. During the Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West football game, October 11th, a free well collection was taken as part of the fundraiser as a result of the efforts. Over $3,000 was collected for the American Cancer Society. Both high schools would like to thank everyone for participation in that event. Next, Wisconsin State High School Music Association Honors Choir. The 2013 Wisconsin State Music Association Honors Choir participants were Sal Anderson-Lind, Maggie Boss, Brad D. Wolf, Jenna Paskey, Emma Thompson, and Ashley Kent. They are a great honor for them and the Oshkosh School District. And as you know, on an annual basis, I've discovered that this honors choir is featured as a public television concert later on in the year, and I've been informed that when that is scheduled, that we will make sure that we get the word out as to when we can look for our participants in that honors choir. South Park Band, students perform at St. Norbert's College Honors Band. Three South Park Middle School Band students were chosen to participate in the St. Norbert's College Honors Band on Saturday, November 2nd. Students were chosen from the middle school band program from across the state to form the honors band and rehearse for a full day and completed the day with a public concert. The eighth grade students from South Park who were chosen are left to right, Jana Hansen, Jack Bouchelle, Lauren Grill. They are pictured of the South Park Band Director Emily Bauer. Reed Elementary, school's literacy and math family night. On October 15th, Reed Elementary had their literacy and math family night. Over 160 people attended the event to hear Dr. Mike Ford from the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh speak about ways families could support the love of reading and learn some fun games with math to play at home. A very special thank you to Dr. Ford, Mid-Morning Kiwanis, Subway on Murdoch, and Hoffmaster and the UWO Optimist Club for helping make such a great event. The South Park starts a table gaming club. Literacy teacher Sarah Bonella started a tabletop gaming club for the students at South Park Middle School. Mrs. Bonella wanted to share her love of gaming with the new generation and offer up all the academic and social benefits of gaming. In addition to positive social skills, the gaming club also provides the students with academic skill building. Most of the games align with specific common core standards. Recently, the students had the opportunity to participate in the N.E.W. Game of Palooza event in Oshkosh. The club worked in collaboration with the N.E.W. game to enhance some family room area and showcase the Oshkosh gaming community to young and new gamers. Students practiced running a game table, teaching games to peers and adults. At the event, they were game makers, were able to run the games that they practiced. They also had the opportunity to play and learn about new games. The highlight attraction for the students were the Athena's Spaceship Bridge. Similarly, together, they had a chance to talk to each other in order to complete a mission. This was a beneficial team-building experience for the students and offered them the opportunity to role-play in order to conquer their insecurities, have outgaming. A total of 10 students participated from grade six through eight. Sully Brooks, Keegan Klein, Josh Crawford, Andrew Koffs, Joey Potrats, Kelly Sherrin, and Kelly Shalowsky, Jack Wagner, and Recean Walters, and Jayden Wright. All come by way of the new gaming, more confident, and a desire to move on to more conventions and broaden their gaming skills. It has been a great experience for the students and a wonderful way for them to participate in community-based activities, and I trust there's no wagering involved. Tipler Middle School, Veterans Day program. Invitation goes out to celebrate tomorrow evening, the Veterans Day celebration at Tipler Middle School at 6:00 PM. And the guest speaker, as I understand it, is our county sheriff for Winnebago County. Lakeside and Green Meadow promote literacy. Lakeside and Green Meadow Elementary have had fantastic events to promote literacy. A family literacy night occurred in late October where students were able to show families their writing and discuss how to write narrative, small moment stories. This was a fantastic turnout, and many families were excited to learn about their children's progress in literacy thus far this year. Lakeside and Green Meadow have also had monthly book swaps where students bring in a book or a few books to swap with other students in the building. The students get to shop for a new book. This monthly event has brought great excitement to our schools. A special thank you to Mrs. Carnes for the school literacy resource teacher who organized this event. Green Meadow, fifth grade Sullivan Woods field trip on October 16th. The fifth graders returned to Sullivan Woods to look at changes that have occurred since spring. Students have been learning about the plant process and similarities in differences in plants. Luckily, the rain was minimal, and they were able to enjoy the day. South Park holds a big bad bottle rocket competition, and thanks to a generous donation and support from Pepsi, South Park was given 52-liter bottles for the competition, which was held in the direction of Jason Giuseppe. Students in the problem-solving and design classes were involved to design a prototype of the design that they would test their design. It provided the opportunity to launch a rocket with compressed air and water to heights of over 100 feet. The payload was a raw egg. The goal was to safely return that egg to earth. Several students were successful in the launch. Oshkosh West cross-country runners qualify for the WIAA state meet. Congratulations to Oshkosh West cross-country runners Lexi Briskie, Mitchell Beck, Sean Gerchel, I need to get a pronunciation on that one, and Rokia Lenz, Brian McKnight, Sam Moore, Logan Pofus, and Jacob Ross on the qualifying for the WIAA state meet, which was held this past Saturday at the Ridges Golf Course in Wisconsin Rapids. The boys' team made its second consecutive trip to the state meet. Along this list, you will find a list of activities that I've had an opportunity to participate in in the last two-week period, and we added one additional item today that our board director, Allison, will comment on as she was a participant in it last night.
Okay, yeah, last night was the first night of the mother-daughter welding class over at Oshkosh North. It's part of the tech ed department's initiative to have more gender equality in the tech ed classes. And present there were three students in the tech ed course, Brayden Davis, Quentin Miller. There is a gal, Mary Lightfuss, she was six, so she was not able to come last night, but those three students will be helping throughout, I think it's six classes over a period of two months. He also had Jill Williams, who's a special ed teacher, and Sue Weber, who is an IST with our district, so they were all helping. And I just wanted to mention that this has all been reinforced by the tech ed department's advisory council that includes support from Fox Valley Technical College as well as the industry welding. Oh, and there's still room. We still have room. There were some parents that signed up that did not show up, so there's still room. If you guys want to, anybody wants to show up, contact Bill Benson over at Oshkosh North.
Thank you. And that completes the superintendent's report for this evening. All right, thank you very much. Other reports? Barb, I know that...
The Administrator Compensation Committee met on Halloween. That would have been last week, Thursday. And there had been several meetings prior to that one in which a subcommittee, I believe, headed by Mr. Nault and Mrs. Schnorr, had worked with Ken Zastro. And they're looking at ways to compensate retired administrators post-employment benefits, which translates into health benefits after retirement. Currently, if an administrator retires, and they've served a certain length of time, their insurance benefits are virtually paid until they turn 65 with some small contributions by the administrators. But those end at 65. Under this plan that they're looking at, the payments could continue even though they qualify for Medicare. They could go to pay for the Medicare benefits or supplemental insurance, and they would cover the spouse as well as the individual. So, we had a productive meeting last week, I believe, and as a result of that, Mr. Nault and Mrs. Schnorr will be working with the subcommittee to refine some of those proposals and bring them back to the committee. We also talked about bringing the proposal to facilities and finance, since there are financial implications under the current plan as well as any new plan that would be proposed for the board's consideration. Thank you.
Other reports? All right, seeing none, we'll go down to individually considered resolutions. Number one, approve the appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salary schedule. Actually, I guess I'll give the full resolution, which is, oh, actually, that is the full resolution. Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like to go first?
Sure. Let's start with some Oshkosh North flashbacks. Thank you. So, as Mr. Mack already said, Northwest United TV Cancer raising $13,000, which was a great fundraiser for both schools, very beneficial to both sides, and also was great that we came together over a big football game like that. We have the Spartan Spooktacular, which was last week, where different clubs maybe did a spooky room, or they handed out candy, played games. Right here, you can see, we have Dean Madden. She came and took pictures of all the kids that came through in their costumes or whatever, and then those students sitting at the table wrote down their name and school, and then we'll be sending them a copy of all the pictures from her. Dracula was the play that Drama Club had put on, and it was a big success. A lot of people enjoyed it, and there's some couple of flashback pictures of the cast and some of them acting. We have big news in the Spartan sports. Meg Hartzell and Alyssa Schaefer represented North in state tennis. Riley Huffman ran at state cross-country this past Saturday. And our varsity football team was all-conference, playing a nine-and-oh season, and they are on their way to the three playoffs. Saturday, November 9th, at 4:00 PM at Titan Stadium, they'll be playing against Holman. This theme is Spartan spirit, if anybody wants to come out and watch. It should be a fun game. The new school store, well, I guess it's the same, it's not new, but we had a re-grand opening, and the new name is the North Outfitters. We have some new clothes, as you can see on the pictures to the right. Got a lot of updates, got the new sign, and then to the picture on the left, you can see some students. It's open between every class period, every hour, so you can stop in if you need maybe a piece of gum or a candy bar to hold you over until the next class. So, it's very beneficial, and there's cappuccino in there, and it's a good way for more students to interact with other students and just come out and check out all the new clothing that they have as well. We have what's on Friday, November 8th, is the blood drive, which will be held all day. And there's a Veterans Day Assembly this Friday as well, November 8th, from 10:00 to 11:00 at North Field House. And conferences will be held November 19th. And what the staff are putting on this year is spaghetti dinner for families and little Spartan spot, so that the kids can come in and play games with our staff and also have dinner before. And as always, it's a great day to be a Spartan.
All right, with West, we've got new updates, events, and news. As well with, I'd like to start off, Mr. Singer and one of our bands, our music program is pretty big, and what he did, I didn't include this in the slideshow, but what he did for Halloween is he actually had a band concert on the date, the 31st, in October. And it's where everybody enrolled in band would perform their performance, but they could be dressed in actual costume. And he had different stage things, a smoke machine would come up. And basically, we got on TV with Channel 5, and it was just something, just a great stuff for the band to get out, reach out to the community. So, that was very, very phenomenal. I was a part of it, and it was just really, really fun. Also, as you heard, Cross Country Boys got 10th at state. This was in Wisconsin Rapids. It was a 5K race, and I'm also a part of Cross Country, and I know the varsity boys have been working so hard at getting this. And not only is it hard to get into state, but the fact that they came in 10th was just like, everybody at West was so psyched for them to do that. As well, we had a varsity girl runner, Lexi Briskie, who came in 82nd overall. So, that just goes to show with the Cross Country how we've had a successful season. So, it's very good to see that. The one-act play will be in Nina Saturday, starting at 9-ish. It's called "The Woman of Troy," and this isn't your average play. It's got new dance moves, and they've been working extremely hard. I stopped in to actually see them because I was previously in a play, and this is nothing that I've seen like before. It's very unique, and their dance moves are so sophisticated. As well, they've got a new aspect of incorporating percussion into their actual play, which Daniel Ballman, Colleen Kerrigan, and myself will be acting as sort of a pit for major scenes in the play, which offers for Drama Club a new way of actually going about doing their plays. So, it's something to come see in Nina this weekend. With the courtyard, we, the student government, have actually opened the library courtyard at West, because as you know, if you go through West, there's courtyards everywhere. And we finally got one open. And now, in the fall, since we got it open, we have all of winter to actually be brainstorming different ideas of what can we do with this courtyard. One of which was maybe incorporating garden club to maybe beautify the courtyard a little bit more and looking out and reaching out to different clubs to see, do you want to help us with this project? So, it's something to look more forward-thinking with. Preparation for Breakfast with Santa. Basically, a part of my presidency, what we have done is, our main advisor has left, so we have a ton of new people in with the student government. So, we formed a bunch of committees for different events to organize things a bit better. And Meredith Gearharts is the main supervisor and overseer for this event. What Breakfast with Santa is, is it's basically, parents take their kids to West, and they'll get a nice breakfast, and then after their nice meal, they will, the kids will have different crafts that they can like make different things with, and it's very exciting and upbeat. And then after, they finish off with telling Santa what the kids want for Christmas, and it's something where everybody can take photos and have a good time with. We've organized this also with different subcommittee chairheads, such as craft, decor, games, and catering. And what's a new twist on this is, our regional focus is not only within the school for teachers and everyone, but to the community, where our student government members will be actually going to different churches, different public places, and be putting up flyers to actually come and encourage to get the community involved with this. So, if this sounds something that you're interested in, please come and experience this. The marketing and organization of this, as well with our committee organizations, is very good, as you see with the flyer idea that we have. So, we really expect a greater number of people to be coming to this. Things to look forward to with West is, we're in the transition from we had a great, successful fall now to winter. And the things that we're all planning for at West is the musical led by Mr. Berenson, Snowblast, which is a great, great event within the whole school that goes on for a week, swimming, wrestling, basketball, and gymnastics. Different games and meets and events will be happening with the sports. As you heard, Breakfast with Santa, the Winter Formal Dance, which last year was called Homecoming 2, but this year, we want to bring a new idea into the actual dance, maybe like a Sadie Hawkins or something. It's still in deliberation right now. Also, we have an idea of the Battle of the Bands. Nothing's final yet, but Courtney and Charity Labaye came up to me, and we want to take all local bands with West and actually put them together and maybe have a competition for judges to perform through the actual school. Just something new where a different bands, rock bands, can actually play. So, all these things, we've had a successful fall, and we're now in the transition to look forward, what can we do this winter? Thank you.
All right, I thank you both very much. And now, we will proceed to the individually considered resolutions. Actually, did I miss anybody else after that? No, there are no other committees? From rabbit over the top of, okay. Be resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salary schedule as filed with the secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Barb?
Just one question on the first appointment there, the instructional support teacher and effective on a date to be determined. What does that mean? Well, what does that mean, or why isn't that more immediate?
I see Mr. Nault on his way up here.
All right.
That hire is coming from Nina, and so we're working on a transition with Nina's students. It's just indefinite at this time. It's hopefully sometime in the next four to six weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Please call the roll.
Weenhop.
Hi.
Weenhop, aye.
Aye.
Edo, aye.
Aye.
Eliason, aye.
Aye.
Turner, aye.
Aye.
Humberger, aye.
Saginaw.
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Walsh and Carey.
Resolution number two, be resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the revised 2013-14 tax levy outlined below as filed with the secretary to the Board of Education. Fund 10, $38,174,374. Chargeback, $40,009.27. Fund 38, $2,800,182. Fund 39, $1,233,113. And Fund 80, $999,589, for a total of $43,248,185.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All right, seeing none, I think we probably should have at least a brief explanation for those who are tuning in with us. Basically, we, as you all know, or probably do know, voted on this once before. It's come back before us due to a change from the state.
Correct. In 1213, they changed the parameters for open enrollment. Usually, you could only apply for open enrollment in February, and then it was effective the next year. Beginning with the 1213 school year, you could open enroll at any time during the year if you met one of seven qualifications. So, what that would end up meaning is that a child could possibly not be at your September pupil count, but still be in open enrollment. Under the previous system, they had to be at your September count, or they were in your September pupil count. In February, they applied for open enrollment, and then it didn't become effective until the next school year. So, they were always in your September pupil count, included in your revenue limit formula, included for state aid purposes. Now, a student could technically come in the first week of October, not be in your September pupil count, open enroll, and open enroll already immediately that month. So, the district would be responsible for paying the other district the open enrollment fee, but we wouldn't have counted the student, we wouldn't have got any tax levy for that student, or any state aid on that student. So, what the state did is allowed the district to have a revenue limit exemption in the following year. So, this is 1213 activity that now we're getting a revenue limit exemption in 1314. It's approximately $50,000. I'm a little shy of that, $49,000. And the reason we have to revise it is the DPI didn't publish that number until the day after you, as a board, approved the first tax levy.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the general public knew why we were doing this again when we had just done it two weeks ago.
I hope that makes sense.
All right, any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Edo.
Aye.
Edo, aye.
Eliason.
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Turner.
Aye.
Turner, aye. Humberger.
Aye.
Saginaw.
Aye.
Weenhop.
Aye.
Weenhop, aye. Walsh and Carey.
All right, our first workshop tonight is the survey results from Springstead for the Oshkosh Area School District Community Opinion.
Welcome, Dr. Don Lifto. And Don is here along with Jerry Duzick.
Jerry.
Jerry's here. And to present to you the results of the survey, the survey was authorized by the Board of Education in the last week of August, this past August, and was undertaken in dates that will be described in the presentation, but a survey of some 401 school district residents to get a sense of where the community might be at, looking at additional financial conditions for support for the district, but as well to provide some other insight for the Board of Education as to how the community perceives the Oshkosh Area School District. And with that, we have supplied copies to members of the board, both in print and online. There are for members of the audience, if you wish to pick up, there are copies in the back of the boardroom as well. And so, they are available, and if community members, I have desire, we will make sure that it will be on the district website tomorrow morning, so that anybody who wants to read the report in detail will be available. With that, Dr. Lifto.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Mack. On behalf of Springstead, I'm happy to be here to go through the survey results with you this evening. I'm going to kind of sit at an angle, and I apologize for those of you that are looking at my back, so I can see you, but also reference the slides that you're looking at as well. Superintendent Mack talked briefly about the purposes of the study. Anytime we do a study of this type for a school district, or a city, or other jurisdiction, we're always interested in collecting qualitative data about the general perceptions of the school district in this case, how people view the school district, what they like, what they don't like, and get some good qualitative benchmark information for you to plan from as you move forward. In this particular case, we're also seeking information about how people currently receive information about the district, how they'd prefer to receive information in the future, and then also zeroing in more specifically on issues related to a potential revenue cap referenda in the future. And so, this particular slide just touches on all three of those general purposes. In terms of the survey basics, to remind you about what we did, the engagement related to collecting data through phone surveys from 400 individuals, we ended up talking to 401 in terms of the survey interviews. As you can see, the data were collected in mid to late October, and based on a sample size of 400, the error of measurement is approximately 4.5 percent plus or minus. So as I'm going through here, if I tell you that 50 percent of the people said this, in your mind, you need to be adding that 4.5 percent, subtracting that 4.5 percent, and that is your confidence band. And there's a 95 percent certainty that the actual perception of all registered voters would be in that range. So while I'll be talking about specific percentages, again, you have to keep remembering that since we didn't talk to everybody, there is that error of measurement, and in this case, approximately 4.5 percent. The methodology that we use with our surveys that we've found to be very, very effective is essentially a controlled, random sample. What that means is that each person living within the district has an equal chance to be called, so it's random in that sense. But before we start any calling within the community, we first go through and complete a fairly elaborate counting of all of the folks living within the school districts. So we want to know how many men are there versus women. We want to know how many older people versus younger, how many parents versus non-parents, some of these key demographic variables, and then we control for those in the sample. In the end, what we're looking for in terms of an outcome is while we're only talking to 400 people, we want the sample of who we call to mirror the key demographics of the community as a whole. These next few slides give you a graphical representation of what I'm talking about in terms of controlling for demography. And I'll take a little time to make sure that you understand what you're looking at here, and then the next few slides are showing you the same information. So as you can see from the legend, the blue color represents file. File in this context means all registered voters. So here, you're seeing gender representation of males versus females. Pretty much everywhere that we do this kind of work, there are more females than males. And so the blue shows you the proportion of males to females. Blue then is, is everybody. The red indicates who we talk to in our phone interviews. So as you look at the, this particular slide, the extent to which the blue and the red bars are pretty much the same, it tells you that we successfully controlled for gender. And the proportion of people who were interviewed, male and female, were essentially the same as the proportion of all men and all women within the district. Is that clear? So again, as I go through these next few slides, just focus on the blue and the red. The blue represents everybody. The red represents who we talk to. This, in this particular slide, you're looking at gender.
And we did actually have somebody call about that, so I'm glad you pointed that out. We had a woman who called.
Superintendent Mack and I talked about that today.
Yeah, a woman who called and said that she was somewhat upset that the poller would not take her information when he was only looking for someone of a male.
Because we'd hit the quota for females.
Right, exactly.
Exactly. And so this is the...
Hopefully, she's listening tonight.
Excuse me.
Hopefully, she's been listening tonight and realizes why it was that we were doing so.
Good point. Thank you. This is the same information by age, and again, you can see that there was a distribution of age that was very representative of the overall distribution. This is the parent profile. Again, they're almost identical, and one of the things we're very careful of when we're working with school districts, particularly if they're collecting data about a potential referendum in the future, is not to over-sample parents. And in most cases, if you were to over-sample parents, you could easily get a false positive that would not really be helpful for your planning. This particular slide is relating to past voter activity of the folks within the district and the people we talked to. Again, the blue represents everybody. The red represents who were interviewed. What five out of five means is that when we look back at the history in the voter file, we saw that those individuals voted in all five of the last five elections, no matter what type the elections were, whether they were municipal elections, or presidential elections, or even your non-presidential statewide elections, they got there for all five. Four out of five means they voted in four out of the last five, et cetera. So again, we wanted to talk to across sample of voters, some of whom were heavily engaged and always coming, others of whom either were new voters, maybe I'm 18 and I've only had one chance to vote, or for whatever reason, less active voters. So those are the demography controls in summary. The methodology that we used in your study, and we've used this hundreds of times across the country, is called a three-benchmark test. And I'll tell you quickly what that is, and then I'll show it to you as we move through the slides. In a three-benchmark test, early in the interview, the person being talked to is presented with some type of proposal or a statement. And this, the statement here is the one that we started with, talking a little bit about what's happened in the past with budget cuts because of lack of revenue, what might be coming up in the future in terms of a revenue cap referendum, and asking people to react to it. We call that the uninformed benchmark because all the information the individual has is what you see on the screen. So it's a broad, general reaction to very limited information. After we get the reaction to this particular statement, we go on to the second set of questions that breaks it down into more detail, provides context, provides examples, provides historical information, and we get reactions to all of that. We come back then a second time and see whether or not the information has made a significant difference in the individual's reaction. And then last, we test in the third benchmark for tax tolerance. So this is the first initial reaction to a possible future revenue cap referendum, and this is how the response turned out, pretty positive in terms of over 50 percent favoring, and then the balance either indicating opposition or indecision. So this is the first benchmark, again, the reaction to that general statement. Now we're moving on and saying, now, I'm going to share additional information about the potential revenue cap referendum in the future. For each of these discrete pieces of information, tell me if knowing that would make you more likely or less likely to be supportive. These are rotated so that they go in a different order for each person being interviewed. And the percentages you're seeing here in these horizontal bar chart is the percentage who said, if I knew that 40 teaching positions had been eliminated in recent years because of budget cuts, that would make me more likely to be supportive of a future revenue cap referendum. So 55.6 percent of the respondents said that would make me more likely to be supportive. And you're seeing the same information then as we go from top to bottom for each of these probes. Now, what you're seeing on the left is not the actual wording of the questions. They're abbreviated to get on the slide, but you have the exact wording for each of these. As I go on to slide 11, you're seeing the same types of probes, and as you can see in the bar charts, you're seeing a descending order of the percentage saying, knowing that would make me more likely to be supportive. So once you get below 50 percent, obviously, less than half are indicating that that particular factoid or detail or piece of information is making them more likely to be supportive of a future revenue cap. So now we're getting to the second benchmark. Essentially, we're saying here, we've told you a little bit more about this. Tell me again, what do you think? And the red bar depicts how people responded after hearing that set of information about the potential revenue cap. As you can see, the favorable bar went up a little less than 3 percent. You always like to see it go up. That's a good thing. But remembering that the error of measurement that I talked about at the beginning is plus or minus 4.5 percent, the statistician would say that there's no change here that is meaningful. Opposition, as you can see, stayed right around the same as it did undecided. So very little movement. When we get this kind of response in a survey, it can mean one of two things, or a combination of two things. One, it can mean that people are strongly opinionated, set in their opinions, and no information is going to change them, you know, from positive to negative. It can also mean that everything I heard, I already knew, and if I already know it, it was already part of my way of thinking about this, so it wouldn't have any impact in terms of changing it. And we really can't tell you what combination of things, in your particular case, that represented. It just simply, for now, it just means that the information provided did not substantially change the reaction. Third part of our benchmark is our third benchmark, which testing tax tolerance. In your particular case, we tested a range of potential tax increases to fund a revenue cap increase. I think they were in increments of $21, if I remember right. These are also asked in different orders to avoid positional bias, or having the person on the call anticipate you're going up or down the ladder, and then responding in reaction to that. So some people heard the highest number first, some heard the lowest number first, some heard a middle one, and then a low, a high, and that was randomized throughout the interviews. This is what the line looked like. As you might expect, as the potential tax increase started at 21, and then move it up to 105, you're going to get a descending percentage of people who said they would be supportive of that. So the direction of this line is the same as every study everywhere. It starts higher and it ends lower. What we're interested in from our point of view is where does it start and where does it end? And are there points between that create a viable, feasible opportunity for, for planning purposes? And as you can see, in your case, that is certainly true. The range that was selected appeared to be very thoughtful, to the extent that the one in the middle was about a 50-50 proposition. The ones that were lower did better than that. The ones to the right dropped below that 50 percent threshold. This is a busy chart. It takes a little bit of time to get your head around it, but all we've done here is taken this response and then divided it based on past voting activity. So the blue section, which you can see up on the right, is about 28 percent of all registered voters. This represents your, the most active voters. It's individuals who got to the polls four or five out of the last five elections held within the jurisdiction. Conversely, the greenish color is your least active. They would be voters who'd gotten their one or, zero or one time out of the last five. And then the red is in the middle. Kind of an easy way to think about this is the blue represents people who pretty much always get to the polls for everything. The green rarely get to the polls, and the red kind of half the time. And so we're looking here to see, are there any substantial differences among those three groups in terms of how they responded to the five potential tax increases? And as you can see, the most active voters, at least in the mid-range, are tending to be a little bit more supportive, and the green are tending to be pretty much consistently a little less, but not significantly. We're not seeing huge variations in those various groups. What we like to see, particularly with the elections that are, would be held in in April, for instance, is we look carefully at the blue and the red groups, because in special elections where you don't have a presidential, you know, election drawing everybody there, or as Minnesota last year had both, you know, a gay marriage and a voter ID constitutional amendment that just drove people to the polls like crazy, in, in April, you typically have somewhat of a smaller turnout, and those elections are often dominated by people who have a history of being most active citizens. And so that's a reason to break the data out like this and kind of take a look at those groups individually. These next half a dozen or so slides are showing the reaction based on different demographic characteristics to the first two sets of questions. So I'm talking about the first general question at the beginning. That's the green bar, the very beginning. And then the orange is, how did I respond after I got some information? So these next half a dozen slides or so are not showing you anything about how people responded to potential tax increases, just how they responded to the first initial question, and then how they responded after information. So here we're looking at male, female. I have never seen survey results where females were not more supportive than males on any question, you know, put in front of folks. So this response is normal, and what we see everywhere. What we're looking at is how big is the divide? And in your, your case, you'd be very typical, where typically we see eight to 12 percent more support by females than males. In terms of responding to information, remember, as we move from green to the orange, it's how people responded to the information. Again, we have some slight upward movement, but within the error of measurement. Here's the same information comparing older citizens on the right compared to 18 to 64-year-olds on the left. Very little difference. And I would say generally, this would be an encouraging response, that people that are at potential retirement age or older are still responding quite positively to the district in this particular context. This slide breaks out responses based on parental status. I know that Superintendent Mack gave you a little bit of information on this, but I'll just repeat it quickly. Parents are currently K-12 enrolled parents. I have children attending the Ashkosh Area Schools. Non-parents are people telling us that they've never had kids enrolled in the district. And the alumni parents are folks like me in my home district. I used to have kids go through the system. They're all done and gone. So that's, in this context, an alumni parent. One of the things that oftentimes surprises school boards and administrators when they look at survey results is they kind of expect to see parents, you know, here, and alumni parents down a little bit lower, and then non-parents down a little bit lower still. Just intuitively, that would seem to be what you would expect. What we see, however, quite consistently is the pattern that you're looking at, where alumni parents are actually responding a little bit less positively than non-parents. We think the reason for that is the alumni parent group oftentimes is kind of a proxy for age. They tend to be in kind of the 55 to 62 range. And sometimes adults who are in that range, the kids are out of high school, they may not be out of college. not be out of college. If they are out of college, they may not be independent. I may be helping pay back college loans. I may have some bounce-back adult kids who are out of school but can't find work. And, by the way, I'm starting to think about, can I retire and when? And so oftentimes, it's more anxiety from that age group than someone who magically does get to that retirement age and things are working out just fine. And so we think that is something that drives this more so than them actually being unhappy with their experience. Here again, you're seeing the same pattern as the previous slides, moving from the green, the general question, to responding to information. Modest positive movement, but within the error of measurement. This is the same information homeowner and renter. This is a common response that we see when we separate in this fashion, and primarily because there isn't as a direct relationship between my housing status as a renter and the implications of a referendum. So this would be a very common finding. This is based on income. The, I've had a household. This one varies significantly. Sometimes we get the results back, and there's a direct correlation between higher income and stronger support. Other times, it's just the opposite. In this case, it's very, almost identical after information is presented at 58 versus 55.5. Interestingly, the households with more modest incomes were the ones that responded most positively to the information. This is based on education level of had a household. Again, very little difference, 59.8 after information versus 54.6. I would say a more common finding would be stronger support with higher levels of education. In this particular case, that wasn't true, although sometimes, if you look at the bars, they look, you know, really starkly different. But you're talking about about 5 percent different, which is, again, not that great. And it may be those that don't currently have a higher level of education are expressing their understanding of the linkage between better schools and better opportunities for children or themselves or their families. This slide shows you how people reacted based on how long they'd lived within the school district. Very, very little difference after information, 56.5 percent versus 54.1. Some positive reaction to information outside of the error of measurement for folks who have lived here a shorter amount of time, a modest decrease with folks who have lived here longer. This slide is looking specifically at whether there are significant differences in perceptions between folks, young people, who registered to vote for the first time within the district in 2012 or later. Now, that could be someone older. I could move here tomorrow and register to vote. But for the most part, it's a proxy for age, and this would represent your youngest voters as compared to prior to 2012. And as you can see, there's a modest difference of about 5 percent after information. And this is representing the support by past voter activity. This is similar to what you saw in the line graph, but in this case, again, we're only looking at, how did I respond to the general question and how did I respond after I got information? The good news in this slide, I think, is your most active voters, who are also the most likely to show up, responded most positively to the information. Now, we're making a bit of a transition and looking at some other qualitative indicators. This first one is the Gallup-Fiedel-Cappa question that's been asked nationally for more than 40 years. You're the teacher for the day. Give your local public schools a grade, A, B, C, D, or F. And so on this slide, you're seeing how people responded to that particular prompt. One of the things that we look at with this particular data, we know from experience that school board members and superintendents zero in like a magnet on the As and then on the Bs. What we're looking at is the ratio of As to Bs to Ds and Fs. And this is a very, very strong positive response, if you look at the ratio. Oftentimes, what we might suggest in terms of why that's important, if a stranger or an uninformed person bumped into someone at the grocery store or a church or at the hardware store and asked something about the district, they're much more likely, thinking about that ratio, to hear something positive than something negative, which is a good thing. Here, what you're seeing is how Oshkosh area compared to the national sample. As I said, this has been asked for decades, and as you can see, Oshkosh in red, almost identical at the A, more Bs than the national sample, and significantly fewer Cs and Ds. The biggest difference from the national sample is the unable to evaluate. But remember, at the beginning of the survey, when I was going through the demographics, 80 percent of the calls went to people without children enrolled in the school district. So it wouldn't be surprising to see a 21 percent in this particular case. We followed up the Fiedel-Cappa Gallup question with asking people, what was the basis of your grade? And you can see, the overwhelming response was the direct experience of myself or my family, and the rest of these broke out, as you can see them on the screen. We also had a qualitative question asking about how well the district does in terms of spending tax money wisely. As you can see, from the just general shape of this particular chart, it's very similar with a nice distribution of As and Bs. The ratio of As and Bs to Ds and Fs isn't as good as the overall quality question, but it never is anywhere. So this is a very typical and a very positive response. The reason this is never as good as the previous data I talked about is the vast percentage of things you hear on the radio or read in the news about school finance is not positive. And so this is never as, quite as a positive a profile, but this is solid and just fine. Slightly higher percent, not surprisingly, don't really know. How well-informed are you based, or how has the district done in terms of a grade, A, B, C, D, or F, on keeping you informed? You're seeing a similar profile again, a smaller percentage, in this case, saying they don't know. Here, we're grading the quality of the school buildings, classrooms, facilities. You're seeing the same general trend and shape as the other slides. Grading the financial management. These next two slides are open-ended, meaning that the people we interviewed were not picking a list or picking a number. They were answering an open-ended question. Describe briefly what you believe to be the best thing about the Oshkosh area school district. And as you can see, by an overwhelming percentage, people recognized you've got great teachers, which is a pretty good place to start any planning process. The second one is the 21.9, a positive response to people or programs that were mentioned specifically, and the rest of these, as they break down. Now, other slash miscellaneous doesn't mean a heck of a lot at all, as you look at it today, but by sometime late this week or early next week, the third component of your study will be provided to Superintendent Mack. And what that will give you is 401 responses to those open-ended questions, broken down by category. So at that point in time, you can go to the other miscellaneous category and see what response is made up that 16.3 percent. Assume you could change one thing about the Oshkosh area school district, what would it be? Now, here, you're going to have your interest peaked for a few more days, because the vast majority of people fell into that other miscellaneous. And some of those, as you look through them, will be substantial and important information. Others will make you chuckle, and it'll be a wide variety of things, ranging from, I noticed that the right front tire of bus 14 had graffiti on it, to things, as I said, that are very substantial and worth knowing. What I like to say about that last workbook that you'll get with the open-ended response is it's not going to change any of the numbers, but it will give you context, flavor, texture, and that's the purpose of providing that to you. Here, people are responding to whether or not they feel that the Oshkosh district can be trusted to manage local tax revenue. The green area are folks who strongly agree or agree. And as you can see, you're looking at almost a two-to-one margin of positive to negative on that particular response. This particular probe that we use, it's not a question, but it's asking respondents to tell us how they react to a statement. And the statement is, I would never vote for a tax increase, no matter what the money was used for. Do you agree with that or disagree with it? Strongly agree, strongly disagree? And your response here is very good. What we're looking at when we use this particular probe is to what extent the community is, you know, tax intolerant, to what extent it's hostile to new taxes. And that red area, where you're looking at 16.5 percent agreeing with that statement, is a little below average in terms of what we see. The range in the red area typically that we look at is anywhere from 12 up to 40 percent. This slide shows you how Oshkosh area compared to all other school districts where we've used the same probe. In this case, you're the darker color in each of those sets. So again, we're focusing on the top two responses, strongly agree and agree. And as you can see, the average that we typically see is around 18 percent, and you're coming in about 16.5, so slightly better than average. To what extent do I feel like I'm informed about the Oshkosh area school district? Here again, you're looking at roughly a two-to-one ratio of saying, yes, I am informed, as compared to not very well informed. There are a couple of questions that focused on how people know about the district, where they get their information. In this particular case, as you can see, the local newspaper came out as most important, as a source of information about the district. The friends and neighbors, radio and TV, information center posted by the district, and down from top to bottom. The best-case scenario is a situation where information provided, sent by the district, comes in number one. And every now and then, we see that. We also occasionally see that coming in last. But this gives you a great benchmark of where we are today, and of course, all school districts would like to see information that they provide kind of moving up in terms of importance. It also certainly reinforces, in this particular case, that your local newspaper is a very important source and one that needs to be worked with over time. This switches the question on information a little bit and focuses more on the future. Moving forward, how would you like to get your information about the district? Printed newsletters, direct mail? Local newspaper, again, up there, second in this particular case? Email, text, electronic, et cetera? Now, this is an example, and it's really true of all of these slides I've gone through. Going from the PowerPoint summary, which is kind of a 40,000-foot view, down into your workbook is where you're going to glean additional information. The response from K-12 and parents, for instance, is quite different, as you might imagine, with much more interest in emails and other information coming directly from teachers and from the district, and less reliance on a newspaper, for example. In terms of conclusions and recommendations, I'm not going to read through all of this in the fine print. I'll just generally summarize, and then if you have questions, I can respond. There is a good base of support for a revenue cap increase. Getting back to the three benchmark test, when we provided general information about this possibility, we had close to 55 percent saying, yes, I would support that. After getting additional information, that level of support went up a little bit, although, again, the caution is that it was within the error of measurement. In terms of a threshold, recall that slide that showed tax tolerance at five different levels, starting, I think, at $21 and then moving up in increments. We would suggest that you'd be looking at an increase in the range of around $56. Now, how we determine that particular number, we're looking at that line graph that I showed you. We're looking to see, where does a line cross 50 percent? And then we're trying to move you back out of the error of measurement. Now, as the planning moves forward, I would, you know, caution you that 56 looks very finite. It's not a round number, and it's a calculation that comes out of a formula, so in that sense, it is. But that doesn't mean that you couldn't be successful at 60 or 65, nor does it mean that it's an automatic win at 45. It's a guideline, and the further you would stray north from that number, the thinner the ice will become, and, you know, the extent to which you'd be under that, you'd be providing some cushion, although we do have the error of measurement, as I said, in that calculation.
To put context to each of those numbers, 21 is approximately $1 million of additional revenue. The double, so you're looking at that number at the 56, you're looking at approximately $3 million worth of additional revenue. The scaling of that is 1 million, 2 million, 3 million, 4 million, 5 million. So that is about the range of rough estimates based on values.
The assumption that this would be a one-time increase?
Well, it would be one year, but what the board will need to determine the normal, I would never ask for a permanent increase, but I would urge the board to consider, and most, I gathered this afternoon from meetings, that in Wisconsin, fairly common, five to six years of sitting at that rate.
But these questions directed at?
Didn't ask how many years. Just asked about the increase.
Tax impact.
Most people would assume one year, though.
I don't think so. And the reason I would say that, as Superintendent Mack mentioned, is the norm is five, six, seven years.
I guess I'd like to see some information. Maybe we can get together. I'm not saying from you, but with a decade's from you, but with a decade or so that we under-leveied here, I would like to, I mean, that permanently damages our ability to.
Every kitchen.
Every time, with less state aid, less competitive with surrounding districts. I would like to see what it would take to get us up to where the surrounding districts are closer, than what that would be if that would fall under that 56, 100,000, if you're talking.
Great. We can work that calculation out. The one other variable that is.
It would still be temporary.
Yeah, it would still be temporary. The one other complication of this, or blessing or explanation that would occur, is automatically the six-year maintenance levy that went into place will expire with this year's levy. That will mean that there's, will be an automatic drop of $1.3 million worth of taxing authority. That would really put a net revenue increase, but with the flexibility that it isn't committed to maintenance, it's committed to operations, at really at 2.7 million net impact, because the, that drop would be 1.7 off of a 3 million, I should say, 1.7 million off. Because if you subtract 1.3 million off of a $3 million number, the tax impact increase would be only 1.7 million increase.
Provided you could actually convey that to the community.
Right. And that's really the.
If that message didn't get across, you'd probably be doomed.
Right. But that's one of the considerations, that the impact on the property taxpayer would, even with passing a one at 56, will be at a rate of 1.3 million less.
On that point, and I know you'll have discussions and determinations about this later, but it's not uncommon at all for a school district to be in that situation. And often, the way the tax data is presented, then, is, if you can imagine, left column to right column, the tax impact associated with the proposed revenue cap increase of X. In the middle column would be a deduct showing the.
Expiration.
Expiration falling off, and over on your right would be net. And that's not uncommon at all. Not that it's not challenging, but it certainly can be depicted in that way. Third bullet here just notes that, in that second section of the survey, when we asked or provided about 15 pieces of information, five of those generated positive support in excess of 50 percent, and those five are noted in your summary. And then the last bullet at the bottom, the overall qualitative perception of the district is good. I showed you data comparing how people responded qualitatively to Oshkosh compared to the National Gallup poll, which was a very strong comparison. We also had qualitative responses about planning, trust, financial management, and all of those were good. With that, I have completed the summary. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond, and if I don't know the answer, I'll respond tomorrow.
I think one of the reasons that we were supportive of moving ahead of this was not just about the referendum, but perhaps that we could use this data in other areas. As I waded through this today, there were some things in there which I was kind of surprised at earlier, was the residency issue. There was a higher group of people who had been here under 15 years, who were more supportive of technology than people who had been here over 15 years. This, to me, if you extrapolate forward, at least in my mind, is, if we're going to attract people from outside of our community, perhaps technology is one of the attractants. It is for people who've been here for less than 15 versus people who have been here for longer than 15. The way that the district gives out communication, I thought was also very telling, you pointed that out, at 11 percent, if they're just give, 11 percent of our people are getting information from us, obviously, we have some work to do there to get that up. So there's good data in there, regardless of the referendum, there's good data here.
And your comments also reinforce something that we talked to Superintendent Mack about, and that I think is very, very important. What I do when I do a presentation like I'm doing tonight, you know, with a PowerPoint, as I said, at 40,000 feet, the real value for planning purposes is in the workbook. Nearly 100 pages of data where you can look in, say, well, what did parents say? What did young people say? What did old people say? What did people say who always vote? And look at those demographic comparisons. And we also provided your superintendent with just one analytical model that some of our clients have used successfully, which is called insights and implications, where on the left side, you put your data, you put the question you asked. The next column is, how do people respond, which is a number. Third, the middle column is the one that's really interesting, which is, what does that imply? Which kind of gets to your comment. If people who have been here less than 15 years are more supportive, significantly more supportive than technology, what does that imply? What do we think that means? And then, as we move from the implication, what are we going to do about it, then, from a planning point of view? And it's really from that workbook where you're going to be able to glean insights for positive planning moving forward. And I would also suggest, and I'll probably be long retired, so it's not the least bit self-serving, is that most of our clients that go through a process like this will come back in three to five years and do it again, whether there's a revenue cap involved or not. Because they want to see, you know, if 11 percent of the people said they got the information from the district in 2013, where are we at 2016 or 2018? So it gives a nice opportunity for benchmarking over time and setting goals, and then seeing, are we meeting those goals?
I assume that there were people that you called who did not answer the questions, who didn't want to take it. And I guess I'm curious, this represents those who actually were willing to take the survey, right?
Yep.
Is there an outlier in the number who didn't take the survey? If you've got a whole bunch of people who won't even take the survey, do you read that information into anything, or is that just discarded completely? The number that we see here is the 400.
We only report to you the people who completed the full interview. So if anybody got halfway through and said, I can't, I don't have time to finish it, they will be offered an opportunity to call back and finish it. But what you have is only those who finish. The methodology I talked about at the beginning counteracts the potential concern that you're talking about in terms of, is it representative? That's why we go through the counting, and before that first call is made, we've got a quota for how many men, how many women, how many, you know, 18 to 24-year-olds, how many parents. And so, if we get a refusal, it doesn't really matter.
It doesn't.
Because at the end of the day, we're focused on making sure that the sample that we do interview is representative of the community as a whole.
So if you have a high number who just dismiss you outright and won't take the survey, you don't, there's no information to be gleaned from that versus a low number?
We don't even hear from our call center unless that's over 10 percent. And I think in the last 10 years, it may have happened one or two times.
Okay.
So that would be very unusual. It's a little bit counterintuitive, because we all get calls at home that we may not really want. I got a call yesterday from the political party that I typically support, wanting to interview me about something, and I didn't do it, because I was busy. So, you know, we know that that's a factor, but the thing to remember is that as soon as we tell people we're calling to get people's opinions about the Oshkosh area school district, now, we're not selling siding, we're not selling insurance. Most people are very happy to participate and give their opinions, a higher percentage than what you would think.
Well, thank you. And I must say that I was a little bit nervous about voting in favor of this originally, because I was concerned, not necessarily about the results, but about how the study would be conducted and the relative worth of the study. And I think it's been well constructed. Thank you.
I love data, and this is data-rich, so this is wonderful. I can't wait to get through into the workbook. I just had a couple of questions and then a comment. I've made the point in a couple of meetings that I believe there's a group of citizens that the district really needs to connect to, and that's retirees from the district. Current practice, as I understand it, is to cut people off in terms of their email as soon as they retire. And I think there's a lot to be learned by the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh, which maintains email addresses for those individuals. And then they have a source of people whom they can communicate to very rapidly and with accurate and up-to-date information. And this sort of thing, I think, would be very rich to share with that group. Secondly, on the slides 41 and 42, specifically 42, that question or that statement, Q23, while that's true, budget cuts led to the closing of those two schools, I think another component to include in there is the fact that there were perceived, at the time of those closings, that there were seats or spaces in other buildings so that those children could be absorbed in those other schools. So it wasn't a case of overcrowding other buildings necessarily, because those two buildings were closed. But having been the central office administrator at the time that those closures were voted on, I know that there was a lot of attention given to the number of perceived empty seats in not only elementary schools but middle schools. And there was discussion around that same time of potentially closing middle school for the very same reason, that you could have better economies of scale if you reduced the number of buildings, and you could have more course offerings, for example, in middle school as compared to having smaller buildings. And then finally, on Q12, I have no doubt that teaching positions have been eliminated. I have no doubt that class sizes have increased. However, and one of my chief sources of information on the school district over the last five years has been the newspaper. So I'm relying on my memory, which can be questioned, but my understanding is that there have been teaching positions that have been added, not necessarily teaching positions where the teacher is in front of a classroom of students, but for example, in those schools that have adopted PBIS, the Positive Behavior Intervention Group or System, some of those schools have added coaches, PBIS coaches, which is a teaching position. We voted, the board voted, a majority of the board voted last time to add tech coaches. Those are teaching positions, although they don't have a classroom. So when we say more than 40 teaching positions have been eliminated, and we also voted tonight to add an instructional support person, teacher at two schools, are we talking about a net loss or a net loss of 40 teachers? Or are we also looking at teaching positions that have been added, but the people don't have a classroom of kids?
I would take Dr. Lifter off the hook on that one, or just from the information we supplied, we supplied is based on the historical data that was gathered as a part of last year's budget reconciliation, listing and all other pieces from the history of the district. That's where we, the gross number was always there, and certainly every year, there might have been a slight alteration of that. But the data on that historical was woven into the question, and Kim has some answers related to.
I just wanted to clarify, the IST position that was in packet tonight is not a new position. We have been trying to fill that position for a very long time, and we finally have somebody, so we're very excited.
There's no net addition.
No net addition. And as far as PBIS, we have a .4 person who is serving all of the seven schools. And then there is a halftime that was purchased with the Sage.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The data that's considered in that was based on the historical data. We are, even if Bob Tester's still here, we're very short on actual history. And so what we did was go back to the history of board actions and resolutions of the past with reductions.
Okay.
And dealing with it, and if there have been slight alterations of that, but the net effect is there. The other comment I would make regarding the issue of closing schools, and I've been involved in closing a lot of schools. And in fact, when I was first interviewed here, that was the first question the local radio station asked, is how many schools are you going to close? Because I had done so in the past. But I never recommended to the board closing schools when there wasn't the opportunity that we, we didn't have enough seats to fill, to move students to those other seats. I don't know of a district that would ever close a school if they didn't have the number of seats to absorb the, but there are other overhead costs that relate to that, and the inconvenience to families and the emotional tie to a local neighborhood school that are impact on that, or a crowding experience. But I've never been a party to a school district, nor observed a school district that closed a school and needed to send 25 children to a neighboring district to do that.
Well, the district also closed another elementary school, that was Sunset Elementary, but that, that wasn't as much a budget cut issue as that was a safety issue, a mold issue in that particular school. And fortunately, space was found to keep those children together as a school entity for several years, thanks to the fact that we did have spaces in several buildings, and the staffs made it work. So again, I think our teachers and the principals in those buildings involved did a phenomenal job. And thank you for your work, it's very impressive. Thank you.
And that's why we excluded Sunset from that collection, because we knew that that was a different causation.
Well, on behalf of Springstead, thanks for the opportunity to help you on this project. Good luck with your planning, and look forward to helping you in the future.
I would just like to add to comment, I'm most appreciative of the board's trust in August in approving this effort. Having had the experience, not only with the guideline data towards a referendum, but the other lessons that are learned through this process, that you've clearly created greater insight into the district, I can tell you that in coming to the district, had I had this baseline data, I would have been far more comfortable in saying yes faster. Because, and until you know this, and I can tell you that not the referendum questions, but the other comparative data of how you are graded are the greatest anxious points for the superintendent in waiting the results. Because you want to have a sense of, how are we doing in comparison to the nation, and how are we doing in relative comparison to the community? And that, to me, is a critical piece for us to have as baseline data for future measurement. Thank you.
Workshop number two, update on programs to assist and identify struggling students that could contribute to expulsion or poor performance or other at-risk conditions. Andy Jones.
I should just preface this a little bit with the fact that Dr. Jones has worked on this presentation as a result of some inquiries we have. We have this, we had this initial wave of a number of expulsions of students for violations of district policies, but at the same time, wanting to have a sense of what kind of level of prevention, what intervention we have. But also, the research that was done in this was to give you a perspective on some historical data on how and the numbers and the types of interventions we have, but the numbers of expulsions historically in the district for a number of years, that gives you a sense that we're pretty much in the ballpark with the past, and in fact, we're doing better than in some recent years as well. So with that, Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Let me start by just, before we even get into the presentation, that there's so much work that has gone previous to us in previous years from administration and specialists and counselors and people that work with our at-risk students. And this is just a very much an overview for you to provide, provide you with some of the programs that we do to prevent kids from ever coming to the expulsion table, which unfortunately is where the board sees these people, these students. So there's a lot of work that has to be recognized from people that have done this work. Okay. Overview of the presentation will be this. We'll start what all schools do, K-12. We'll start what all schools do, K-12, elementary, middle school, and high school interventions, what alternative services we provide, and then we'll talk about the pre-expulsion and the expulsion process. All schools, and again, K-12, this would be, all schools have care teams. They have school counselors, use progressive discipline, they have restorative justice components that they use, they have gap analysis that they look at, breaking their students down by demographic data, per the state testing. We use, are using RTI. We have select schools using, as Barb mentioned already, PBIS, that's been in place for a while. We have pupil service teams, that's psychologists, school social workers, nurse, school counselors, and we also use co-taught classes. That's one regular education teacher paired with a special education teacher in the same room at the same time. Focusing on our elementary schools, again, a little redundancy, but I didn't want to make, I want to make sure that you understood each level. We have care teams, we have LRTs, ISTs, instructional support teachers. We have program support teachers, PSTs, they mainly work in the special education realm. We have school social workers, school counselors. We have OSIT, which is the Oshkosh Community Intervention Team, and that's made up of both public school and our county services, working together collaboratively on students. Oops. Yep. Going to the middle school, again, the things that you've seen already, care teams, school counselors, and progressive discipline. We do collaborate with social services when needed. We now transition at the middle school, both kids coming to the middle school. We get data from the elementary as they transition to sixth grade. We know that's a big leap for students. And as well as they're leaving, when they leave and going to the high school, that's another leaping point, and we gather data and design and look to see what programs we can or need to put in. You'll see those in the high school here coming up. We do tutoring before and after school. There's a new program through the state data system called DOOS, which is the Dropout Early Warning System. It flags students that could be performing poorly, could be attendance risks, et cetera. So it's a system that flags it already now. It's something that the state has come out with this year. It's a new program for us. And at the middle school, we have math and reading interventions for students that struggle in those areas. We have school social workers that also work there as well. And again, OSIT is also used at the middle level as well. Moving to the high school, again, some of the same things you've seen. We do collaborate with social services, as mentioned. At North High School, they have something called the DASH program. It's a credit recovery program that is combined with a tutorial program. When students do poorly at end of a grading period, immediately they intervene and try to recover the lost knowledge right away. If we had a semester one of a class, a semester two, they intervene right away at semester. So that knowledge isn't lost, and they have a pretty good batting average on the success of that program. High schools both also work on lunch programs, tutoring students during lunch. A lot of those, those teachers give up their time voluntarily to work with kids on a one-to-one basis. And again, we talked about the DOOS system that's also available at the high school level. High schools also have academic lab and learning center every hour of the day to provide tutoring services by our staff. So both high schools, every hour of the day, there's someone to help them if they need help, depending on the area. At West, they have a content mastery center. This is mainly geared for the IEP student resource, an IEP student who may need help or is struggling, a special education student that may need help. We also have programs that students can work outside of the school to earn credit. They can earn a maximum of two credits to learn from other people in other fields. We do daily attendance checks, which result in, we have truancy meetings that meet frequently to try to catch kids that aren't coming to school regularly, another way we can check on things. And at North, they have designed in their schedule a core team, they call it, and this is the Math, Science, Social Studies, Language Arts. And they have students that rotate only through those four teachers. So the students that have need of this program have a connection with only four students. Instead of having multiple students, these teachers also have the same schedule, so they can meet and collaborate. And they've had a lot of success with that program as well. Something the high schools have been doing as well is sometimes they make behavior contracts. This clarifies issues between a student and the school and the parents to make sure that we have a clear communication and clear understanding of what is expected or in a problem area. It's kind of a pre-step to the pre-expulsion process before it comes over to central office. It's a nice way to clarify things. And then we have math lab, and then North has just started its AMP program, which is Awakening My Potential. That's an after-school program that's been funded through the North CLC grant. And that, I'm just like, when does that program start and end time of day?
Three thirty-six.
Three thirty-six. So that's kind of a look at the high schools. So other services, and there'll be a presentation coming in spring to do some more refinement of this, but to give you an overview of some of the other services beyond those that we offer to try to, again, serve our children and help them in any way we can. We have the E2020 program. That's a computerized program that we use, again, for credit recovery. We have the GED Option Two, also called the New Start, New Start Program. And then again, that's a GED program. We have homebound instruction when needed for an IEP as a result of an expulsion. We have the Riverside program, which you're probably familiar with, which is an at-risk program for students who don't do well in the traditional school setting. We have the Second Chance program, which is for EBD students who have been adjudicated, and that program is out there. We have various services that we buy from CISA Six for students as needed. Sometimes there's some things that they can provide that we can't. We have the Jackson Street School. This is education for incarcerated students. We service that as well. And we have the OASD E Academy, which is open to all students. And sometimes we use that as an alternative to continuing education for students. So as far as all of those things through the schools and the programs that we have, we offer a variety of services to meet the individual needs of the students that are struggling. And those are some of the nets, if you like, that we catch students before they come to us or come to the board. Transitioning here, the second part of this presentation is about the expulsion process. And in this part of the presentation, we'll talk a little bit about the statistics about expulsions, how frequently it happens, the steps prior to an expulsion, the pre-expulsion process, expulsions in general. And then we have data on, historical data on expulsions and some of the information we have. And then we'll have some closing and follow-up that's coming in spring for you. Statistically, less than 1%, .079 students will ever be expelled. Stated the opposite way, 99% of our students in the Oshkosh area public schools will never be involved with the expulsion process. Because of this small present population, we need to be careful about the information that I'm going to be presenting to you. It's been generalized because it's such a small population, we need to, we'd be very careful how we present this. We have been tracking data all the way back since 2004. Okay, before an expulsion even happens at any level, there's an investigation, and that investigation sometimes can include law enforcement, sometimes it does not, but a very thorough investigation has been done. As mentioned, sometimes a school behavior contract may have been implemented already as another action step prior to the expulsion process. If a student gets, has done something significant, they'll be suspended up to five days, and that's the maximum that a school can suspend a student without going to an expulsion. They will typically meet with me within those five days. And if it warrants going to the board, an additional ten days of suspension will be added, making a total of fifteen-day suspension. And in that ten-day timeline, the board will meet and hear the case. Before it gets to the board, many times in my office, we have a pre-expulsion conference. The idea of this was set long before me, previous administrations. It was a fabulous tool that they put in place. It gives a chance for both the school and the parent and/or the student to explain their side of the situation. So I hear both sides of the concern, both from mom and dad and child and from the school. That meeting enhances communication between all parties involved. And after hearing that, I make a determination whether the board will hear it or not. I don't determine whether they've been expelled or not, I just determine if it's going to go on or if we're going to create other conditions that might resolve the problem without bringing it to expulsion. And I'll show you some data later in the presentation on that. If we do decide that it's going to the board and the offense has risen to that level, there's generally, these are the things why we would expel. Either a policy or law requires it, two, the incident was so severe that it warranted it, or B, the breaking of a pre-expulsion agreement. Those would be generally the three reasons that it would come to the board. The following slides will give an overview over time of what we've done and broken down the data. The sources are both the OASD database that we keep on this and also DPI websites, public record for other districts. Again, this is specifically Oshkosh data only. This is, I believe, ten years' worth of data, and the bars represent the number of expulsions in that year. And so, as you can see, Kurt, in thirteen and fourteen, that's just as of today, that's where we stand, but.
And since that time, we've had a third one.
Correct.
Right.
So gives you some trend data on the number of expulsions that the board has seen. This is broke, the data broken down by school. If you start at twelve o'clock, that would be Elps, and the middle schools are, would be from the one to three range on the, if you're using a clock as a reference. And then again, you see the two high schools fairly balanced for their size. And then East High School, which is no longer in existence, is also up there. So if you wondered what EHS.
It's half high school, half middle?
Pretty much.
Did you say half high school, half middle? No.
It's a little skewed.
It's a little, it's like sixty, forty.
This is what you're looking for.
Oh, sixty-five, thirty, okay.
So the number, the sixty-five and twenty-nine are not percentages. What those are is actual number of expulsions. So that is not a percentage, but it gives you a pie graph representation of middle school versus high school data. This is by, broke the same data again, the numbers represent the actual number of expulsions by grade level. Again, starting if you were on a clock, it would be sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, going around, ending in twelfth grade. Basically, the vast majority, half of our expulsions happen in the tenth and eleventh grade. So I, that, the data is.
Brain development, is that it?
Could be.
It's a part.
This is interesting data as well. These are the number of pre-expulsions not resulting in expulsions by year. These are expulsions that never came to the board. This was all handled through pre-expulsions. The pre-expulsion process where conditions were recreated, essentially, an order was made to say, let's do these things to try to assist the child, could be ranging from extensive counseling to setting conditions, a loss of privileges or location, to try to, again, set up parameters for success. And so there's been quite a few successes, again, by year. In 2010, ten-eleven, there were fifteen expulsions that never made it to the board. So again, that, complimenting previous people that created this process, it's a wonderful tool to intervene, again, just another layer of support we can give students. What has happened as a result of the expulsion process? This data, again, the numbers actually are actual numbers of students. Twenty-six returned from expulsions came back to the schools. So after they were expelled, they were expelled, could be expelled, for example, a year or two, and then returned back to school, came back. Four went to online schooling after their expulsion. Eight withdrew from the district, and fifty-six were expelled permanently from the district. And remember, this data is over time. This is the data, each school district, you see, comparing ourselves to other high school districts. This is only high school data. This does not include any type of middle schools, pulling it off the web. Comparing ourselves to similar-sized school districts, each school district, as you see Oshkosh in the lower left there, that is eight years' worth of data that you see. Each bar represents eight years of data. And you can see how we compare to some of our sister districts.
What's Wassa do?
They just had a bad year.
No, they had a great year. They don't have any expulsion.
I don't have anybody expelled.
They had almost two or three years in there, it looks like they had none.
This is what only was reported to the DPI, so I can't, I can't hypothesize on what other districts are or not do, but as you can see, I would think if, at the trend, we do quite well. And I think our trend data speaks well of that as well. In closing, as far as expulsions, our number one priority is student safety for everyone. And that always has to be our number one priority when we get to this last option. As we've shown, I've tried to show, we've attempted to have been through many programs and processes to support students. There's many, many safety nets that students continually have to go through, although a few, again, less than 1% fall through. But, and when we talk as administrators, we wanted to point out that some of the issues we deal with, again, there are a variety of things that the board deals with and you're well aware of, but many of the issues are AODA, you know, alcohol and drug issues. And alcohol and drug does not discriminate. It hits all classes, all types, male, female. It does not discriminate. And sometimes when, you know, it brings us to the next, the next statement, which is unfortunately, despite our efforts, sometimes good kids at times make very poor choices without any warning signs. And sometimes that happens. Like I said, it can be very frustrating when we see very capable students doing things that are very, very challenging. We have more to come. Dr. Guiley and Julie will be giving a spring presentation, a little more in-depth presentation on the at-risk programs and alternative education plans that we have here in the district. There's also going to be through P and G, policy and governance, policies that are going to be updated. And so instead of giving you, information's going to change, they're going to wait, and as the policies come through and get updated, then in spring, that should be, we should have accurate and correct information to present to the board at that time. And that'll be, again, a PK three-twelve comprehensive overview. So with that, I'll answer any questions that I can. Allison, ladies first.
Ladies first, okay. A couple of things. In terms of, let's get, just because we just talked about expelling kids, do you guys Do you guys keep a record of the offenses? In other words, do you categorize them into violent offenses, AODA offenses, and so forth?
We keep a database on all factors.
Okay.
What the offense was, when it was, how long it was, when it was heard. We keep a ton of information on each case.
Okay, and you said most were AODA, do you mean fifty-one percent of them are? Or we're talking seventy, eighty?
Well, the, let me just back up here to... I think it would, I didn't really give, I guess I did not give that data because it was, it wouldn't be appropriate to give that data as it could give out information that is protected.
Okay, okay, well, so then...
Remember, we're dealing with a very small group of population here.
Okay, so three years I've been on board, I've been in several expulsions. And what I didn't see in any of the at-risk services, and I don't, I didn't see it tonight in terms of what we do for expulsions or pre-expulsions. My generalization, overall generalization, what I have seen personally is that most of the kids that we expel are male. And they are most, mostly very highly capable children based solely on WKCE or math testing.
That would be a correct assumption.
Okay, so that's just a generalization.
And in tenth or eleventh grade.
Yeah, and in tenth, eleventh. Okay, so knowing that, or thinking that maybe that's the case for most of these kids, what are we doing for these kids that are falling through the cracks? Again, we're talking about, you're right, less than one percent, so maybe a handful of kids. But when you keep seeing the same pattern coming back again, I wonder, the first thing I wondered is, is do we look at the effectiveness of all the services that we have, because we have a lot of them? And do we know which ones work, which ones don't, and why? And then what about, what do we do about these really highly capable kids that we are losing? Because that's almost tragic, right? You've got these kids that are, so...
Let me ask the first part, and then I have a feeling people want to add to it.
A lot of people coming to the table.
I think the first part of it is this, I think any program that we do have, it does work because it's right for that kid.
Okay.
And as we're talking, as you're talking, maybe the ones that slipped, the ones that slipped through the net, so to speak, I can give you, you know, hundreds that we caught.
Okay.
And again, I think sometimes, hence the statement at the end, sometimes good kids do bad things. And it came out of left field, it could have been they broke up with their, you know, girlfriend, or they... The reasons, it's hard sometimes to apply logic to illogical situations that sometimes happen, or kids' emotions got the best of them. Many times, in dealing with cases very recently, it was because I couldn't control my emotions at the time. And Kelly's probably right, it's developmental, things are very, are there. In a few years, they go away, and hence probably some of the way the data shows that some of the kids do return.
But most don't? Over half don't come back?
Well, I think too, I just want to make a quick comment that there seems to be a lot of service, I'm looking at that TV, that's why I'm looking up there, a lot of services provided. But I think we have, I'd be interested in the disaggregation of the data in terms of issues that seem to put a student at risk. You know, yeah, we know about adolescent development and their prefrontal cortex is pretty immature. And the limbic system is driving the bus. And so I think we know that, but we say we have a lot of services up there, but I think we have to say that we do not have school counselors in every buildings. We do not have social workers in every building. We've got social workers with up to five buildings. We've got school psychs spread thin, we've got nurses spread thin. And on top of that, we've got school counselors doing inappropriate tasks like master scheduling. That is not giving them direct service to kids who need it. And if we know that the adolescent brain is immature and the limbic system is driving the bus, you know, are there more social, emotional support that we can put in there to just try to fill some of these gaps? Because the expulsions that I've been on, a lot of times, these kids are, they're hurting. And they're right, they're not academic. And a lot of the services that I see are academic, for academically at-risk students, not students that are emotionally at risk. And I know we've talked about, you know, the PATHS program and trying to, try to fill these emotional needs. But I think our pupil services teams that are experts in helping the school fill that gap is spread so thin that I think it's part of what we, at some point, have to address.
I'd also just like to say that, you know, it's less than one percent, you know, that sounds great. But you're still on ten thousand kids, you're still talking about eighty kids, which is three classrooms full of kids every year that we're expelling.
That was over a long time.
That's, let me go back, Matt, that would, that'd be correct. This is the actual number of students. So out of roughly, if we would just say ten thousand students annually a year, ballpark it.
So the point seven-nine was over a ten-year period? Oh, point zero-seven.
Zero-seven.
Was touched by the process, not still expelled.
Right. So, we're looking at, to, again, let's go to data, I'd rather go backwards than recently.
No, I saw the, I assumed that...
One student was expelled for the entire ten thousand students. Mr. Dito.
I agree with someone on Kelly's saying, on the expulsions I've been on, I guess I'm still looking for data, and I understand that the primacy issue, I have a couple of quick points.
Sure.
Some of the data that you guys provide is, provide is awesome. I mean, you know, and while you say that, like, good students make bad choices, on many of the expulsions I've been on, they've been making bad choices for many, 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 many years, and this has finally come to fruition. Yes, we need counseling and stuff like this, but I think this also goes past just the school district, that this is more of a community-wide issue. Because this has got, there's definite parental and family life adjustments that we, are out of our, out of our hands, we can't deal with. We can certainly try to give as much resources as we can to it. The academic interventions, I found that, I sent you that one piece on restorative justice that was, Oshkosh was one of, what was it, something like seventeen districts in the state that did this restorative justice program, which lowered our expulsion rates. And for any kind of like violent interaction or something that was actually trying to get the victim and the perpetrator, or the two conflicted parties together, to suss out the deal instead of like going to the expulsion process, which I thought was very cool that we are doing that. My comment on about the stuff that was presented this evening, the DUCE program is new. And this came up on my radar earlier this year because I was looking at the, as we do when we send in these expulsion hearings, I think it would be beneficial to all of the board members to have even more data there. When, where were the interventions placed within this process? Yes, we have the disciplinary procedures. This child did this on April fifteenth of two thousand and eleven, and then they did it again on August, you know, twelfth or something. The interventions would be nice to see in there what some of the processes we try to deal with. And that brings me to the DUCE process. If this is a new, a new system that the state has developed, are we going to be able to look at, in the future, sometime three, four years, the early warning systems already kicks up and somebody is like, all right, this person here is being flagged for either academic or attendance issues? Are we going to be able to keep and collect that data to find out, are interventions successful when these flags kick up? Because I would, I would like to see that happen down the road sometime. And I think that that's one of the concerns, I'm speaking for myself. And I think one of the concerns on the board has been, I know, Matt and myself a few years back started poking at this hornet's nest. Are we making the right choice when we expel these students? On some of the issues, I would definitely say, yes, we are. On other issues, we have an awful lot of them that don't come back to the district, and I wonder what happens to those kids? And are there different options that we can employ? And I think that's probably a lot of the reason that we're, had this information brought forward this evening, was trying to gain some insight on that.
Just a note, because you mentioned the program, Restorative Justice. Ironically, that was, but it, that information you sent me was two thousand and nine. And as you see the data moving forward, I definitely would support that something changed. So, you know, those are the type of things. Again, I think, I think you, also, I'd like to agree with you on, we have the students for seven and a half hours of the day. And can we do more? Absolutely, if a student needs it, we will, we will find a way to help them. And that's those personal relationships that our staff and teachers do an outstanding job of building. That's why kids sometimes come to school, is because of the relationships they have with those people. Even if they're struggling in school, they come because they get that positive, you know, interaction with somebody in their life. Sometimes, at times, school is the most safe and secure place that they have for those seven and a half hours. Those are some of the situations, again, when they leave us, we can try when we find out about these things. We do intervene with other agencies as well. That being said, and again, referencing what sometimes the board does see of students that have high academic ability and achievement, et cetera. And sometimes it may be a developmental issue for them to work through, et cetera. But I think I would be careful in the cause and effect. Sometimes things just happen, and they're not explainable. Again, that's what I'm trying to say, for the number of students, and every student's important. I mean, as an administrator, there are two things that I have to do. One is recommend the child be in front of the board and have the board decide what's going to happen to them. And two is the same thing with, an administrator has to, if they have to non-renew an educator. In both cases, we have to admit that we failed, that the system didn't make a difference. And that's hard for us to swallow. But at the same time, when we look at safety issues and the greater good, we have to, we have to look at that piece as well. Now, last thing I'd like to say is that the board does always, seems to very wisely, exercise options to always provide education or when appropriate, you know, and that's always a case-by-case basis. And the board does a wonderful job of providing those, those extra opportunities, be it, you know, in a different way to get the education. We're always about trying to produce kids that could be productive members of society.
I want to thank you for this presentation. I think it's evident that a good deal of thought went into this in preparation, and I really appreciate this perspective. I'm thinking it was about ten years ago, this room used to not have this little piece that comes in. And now it's a nice little sitting area, I believe. But that used to be full of study carols where students who were expelled would come, and they would be supervised by the superintendent of schools at that time. And they had specific times they would come, and he would interact with them and make sure that they were on target as far as keeping up with those online courses. That changed, at least by the oh-nine-ten school year, when the district collaborated with the Boys and Girls Club, because they don't have children there during the day.
Right.
And so their computer lab was used for the expelled students. That way they weren't coming to a school facility. And the district had a, I think it was a part-time counselor who would make them, the kids were only there part-time, and then she would monitor their progress. I, first of all, I agree with everything that's been said here. As a new board member and sitting on the other side of the expulsion process, I realize that, as Dr. Seganak pointed out, sometimes the brain development and the kids operating in the brainstem rather than higher up influences some of these impulsivity behaviors. And a kid who acts seemingly out of content or context gets in trouble, and there isn't a track record of intervention. But when, when we look at data that's presented and we see that, for example, that there's a history of either high absenteeism, or over the years it increases, or we see grades that are maybe Bs and Cs, which might be acceptable in some settings, but their WKCE results suggest they should be performing far better than that. To me, those are signals that should be picked up on for any student, whether they result in a pre-expulsion or an expulsion hearing. So, I would, as I think Mr. Dito was suggesting, I'd like to see some results after, I'd like to see the intervention information presented at those expulsion hearings so that we have more data to go on. And secondly, I think that's important to communicate to the family, so the family understands that this wasn't just boom. You went from pre-expulsion to expulsion, and the school district didn't help in some ways, or at least attempt to help. And secondly, that piece about the online results, if these kids want to continue their education while they're expelled by being online, there should be a way of monitoring that, being, so that the kids are accountable. When those parents sit there and cry, and the kids too sometimes, and maybe the board members, because we've got to make this tough decision about a child, and that child and the parent convey that they so want to continue their education, and they feel that they really don't want to lose a semester or a year, I think it's the district's responsibility to make sure that we're monitoring that, and there's some accountability, whether it's to the superintendent or the board, I'm not sure who that should be to in terms of confidentiality. But at the end of, for example, this year, if three students have been expelled, and they, let's say they all go online, there should be some way of communicating back to someone at this table. Who's making progress, who didn't make progress? What were the results of being online and being able to continue their education before hopefully they were readmitted to the school system?
But I think that does happen, doesn't it?
Absolutely.
Well, it absolutely does happen.
I guess as a new board member, I wasn't aware of that.
And the biggest thing we have done in my four, you know, just in being part of four years on the AP side, but now on the principal side, is really working with families and not settling at saying to them, you need to go seek anger management, but going with them, or working with our social worker to go with them, or set that time up and then follow through, and truly, you know, like Dr. Jones said, going above and beyond with our families together through this, so that it doesn't come to the result that none of us want to see. I think that's, that's been a huge opportunity for all of us to really build that partnership between ourselves and our families, is to work one-on-one with our shared kid. Because it really is, it's both of ours now at this point, and how do we help support? We have the expertise that sometimes they don't, so our job then becomes to fill those gaps and help them. And, and, you know, whether it's taking them, setting it up, making the phone call, we do that every single day with limited resources, but it's just the great people we have that do it. And the families are more than willing to let us help them with that. And I think that has proven to be such a huge partnership, you know, and I see that with all of our students at this point, whether it's a four-point-oh student who's stressed out about cap classes and, or a student who's struggling in general with something that's not at all academic-related. It's really opening that door and that partnership with families and full service. And that's really the job we've taken on, and I know I can speak for West as well, in how do we fully service these students so that it doesn't have to come to this point? And then progress monitor everything. So it's not just academic progress monitoring anymore, it absolutely is the emotional, social well-being of these kids that we check in on a daily basis. As soon as there's an issue or a concern that comes up, it's absolutely a daily check-in, regardless of how big our high schools are.
One of the, one of the pieces that I would like to have maybe further research in, I believe it's retrievable, is the whole issue of what the decision in some of these cases were for the board about any return agreements. We don't, I think we need to look back at the history to see. Mr. Macy always tells the parents that it is the board's discretion to suspend fully through age twenty-one and not readmit. He tells that to the parents regardless of the outcome, and then tells what the actual decision is. Because, authority, and I think one of the things we may... And I, I think one, one of the things we may want to research further with a number of those where they, they return to school, it might have been, the, the severity of the behavior or the action may have been, you know, you're, you're finished. You, you don't return to this, you know, it might have been a weapon issue, it might have been some, or a distribution of drugs issue as opposed to that, that, and I don't think that was necessarily picked up in that, and I think it's retrievable. But what was the actual board's determination in the expulsion that gave the avenue? In every one that I've been a party to now in seventeen months, the board has put in readmission opportunities for review. I don't know that that was the history. And so we may be dealing with a history of, at some point in time, some decision was made to, to throw the student out and throw away the key. And we don't know that, but I think it's worth the researching because that outcome is there. But from the standpoint, with the exception of, of one of the, and that actually was a student last year that we lost through, who there was a negotiated release, never came to full expulsion, the students that left us during last year came back to school. And our track record on returning to school are at, is a different level than historically there, and so we're kind of inheriting a past that the issue is throw away the key. The other piece that I, I would strongly encourage, because we are a highly regulated organization through, through, our, our student behavioral policies are so in-depth and so, and so prescribed, that at some point in time, we may want to review that in some cases that even on some of our more grievous offenses that maybe don't necessarily convey themselves to harming other students, but only maybe a, a, a drug or alcohol consumption or possession, something at, at school, maybe there is the opportunity to look at, is there a second chance? But now, everything that's prescribed in policy comes to the board because it's prescribed in policy. And the real question is, should we look at policy and to what extent does that also, unfortunately, put more pressure back on principals to say, you know, we have to put up with this twice? Well, but the question really is, if we're going to try to get at the issue, you know, this is no different than the national issue on getting, very serious on drug abuses and the overcrowding of Wisconsin prisons or the national prisons, because the attitude of the nineties, eighties and nineties was lock everybody up and throw away the key and the problem will go away. Well, in expulsions, the restrictions and how tight we have woven our policies also have a play in this, this issue. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not convinced that that is the best alternative, but I think we should review that there might be some offenses that maybe deserve another chance. But our administrators must bring them to you, because we also have to be consistent in the fact that if we ever divert or make a choice, we then are on a slippery slope that any future actions are undefendable, because it has to be consistent with the board-established policy. So it's, it's another piece that I think is, warrants some analysis as to saying, are there issues that our, our principals and our staff take a look at, our counselors, our social workers take a look and say, you know, maybe this is one that deserves looking at, maybe modifying policy potentially, so that it doesn't force the choice. If you take action to modify policy into the prospective future, then you're not on a slippery slope, because you've adjusted for all those who come through at the next level. I'm not sure that there are any of those, but just remember, in, in civil law and in, in criminal law in our society, X amount of whatever offense lands people in prisons where they can no longer, they don't have enough space, they have to get court orders to, to let people go early. Well, you know, school expulsions are on the same, are a same issue, only the opposite direction. Instead of keeping individuals in, the number of individuals leaving are, are concerned. And so it, it warrants looking at a, a review and saying, is there something that we should ask the board to consider in policy and governance for a potential modification? I'm not making a judgment that there is, but it wouldn't hurt to take another look.
That's cool, Stan.
But I think we actually do handle some of this already. I, I mean, the fact that, you know, they, they bring policies before us, seems actually very reasonable to me. It's, it, as you say, is a very slippery slope, if, you know, you're, if you're just sort of winding around and, and sometimes enforcing this policy and sometimes not. And through the pre-expulsion process, they do give, you know, they, they do, I assume, then weigh, you know, well, okay, what is, what has this person done before, you know? Is this someone who's had repeated offenses like this, or, you know? They began, they, they begin at the pre-expulsion or before we ever see the, the child to examine the overall growth of that child and, and the other items or, or disciplinary actions that have taken place. And it's, it's at that point, I'm assuming that, that they are making those decisions with regard to policy, that the policy is, you know, X, Y, or Z, and they're determining at this pre-expulsion before we ever see them, okay, well, yes, they violated this policy, but, you know, in this particular case, we don't feel that the child is going to endanger the lives of other children on, on the site, or is going to, obviously, one of the things we're trying to do is protect children, and if, if they determine that, that that child will not represent a hazard to other students, they're probably going to do their best to ensure that it doesn't come before us as, as an expulsion. And once it does come before us as an expulsion, then we as the board still have one more step in that. As, as you say, we generally do decide whether or not the expulsion will range from a course of a semester through, as you say, the age of twenty-one. I only remember one case that, that we did that, to that extent, over the course of the time I've been on the board. And I guess, from that regard, I think that we are, we are hopefully not as regimented as, as.
And, and part of what, in, in my discussions and as, you know, both from past experience and experience here, is that the first step that is the scrutiny step before bringing it to the board, is that first question that you always, as a board member, members on these committees that review them, did it really happen? Is it, is it as it's described? Because that, that's, because that's the screening device that becomes important, that, that Andy Jones in hearing the case has to be convinced that what was described really happened, because we don't want to put the board in the judgment to have to suddenly say, well, I don't really think this happened. And then we have failed in, in doing our job to bring it forward at, at that stage to, to do so. And then the second really is the severity based on all the history, the judgment that then you can exercise judgment as board members as to the depth and, and breadth of what the, the length of discipline should be.
And again, Matt, I think you have, I think you have a very, very accurate understanding of, of what happens in that pre-expulsion, as you have the perfect, as Dr. Herzog, I guess, has sat in the chair before, as I'm sure I had some experiences like this. So we do try to, to deal with, you know, things, and, and the last resort is, is bringing it to you. So we do screen those, and we do intervene, and, and sometimes we push them back, as, as Mr. Mack said, sometimes we do say, you know, you're going back to school, so the length of, of their consequence would be five days, and you're going back, you know, on Monday, and these are the new conditions that we're going to operate with. In fact, within the last twenty-four hours, that very event has just happened, so they happen. Emma?
I guess going along with the psychological and emotional thing, you raise like a really good point, because I guess I've always been fortunate enough where I, I go in to see my principal, or my counselor, or, you know, anybody that works, I know I'm going in and they care about me. I know whatever I say is, is going to be, you know, confidential. I can go to Ms. Schlecker's office almost every day, and she can tell when I'm having a bad day. Like, I know those people care about me. And I think that, you know, just because the percent is low, that doesn't mean that we can't look into that kind of issue, because those, you know, there's other kids that feel that same way, where, like, emotions run high when you walk through high school and middle school. I'm fed in those shoes, and I really think that, that's a really good point, that there needs to be more of those people for those kind of kids to go talk to and feel comfortable, just like I do every day walking into my administration, just if I go to say hi, you know, like, most kids should feel comfortable doing that.
And I, and to answer one question I believe that wasn't answered, we do have a high accountability when we, when, at a pre-expulsion, it's a very high accountability. For example, if we talked about some type of counseling, it's not, it's not, gee, I wish you, you would do that, it's, you have thirty days to come back, show me proof that you have actually enrolled and are actively engaged in, in counseling. So we always set up checkpoints to, you know, this is not optional, you know, we're trying to intervene here. And again, I think the parents are ninety-eight percent, maybe ninety-nine percent, you know, they're with us and trying to, they're at their wits' end, because most of the time, if things were going well and they knew how to solve it, it would have been solved. And sometimes it's just those issues. And again, probably to Kelly's point as well, is that I've seen children, as we go through this process over my twenty-five-year career, where kids are reaching out, and, and this is the only way they know how to reach out, to say, help me, get me out of here. And if I do enough wrong, you'll have to do something. And, and minor cases like that. Again, that's why each case, and, and what Matt said is absolutely true, ultimately the board decides. And, and I think, again, as a compliment, they've been very wise on the length of, of how things and interventions that they want to see happen, to again, to ultimately help the child. Last piece would be, again, as we looked at that, at the grade level data, if I could, in two seconds here. Oops. You know, it might be interesting data too, to find out what is the average length of expulsion. Me ballparking it would be probably about a two-year. Now, if you look at, at, if most of these happen in, you know, tenth or eleventh grade, a lot of kids will make the choice, I'm not coming back.
It's two-year, but usually we have the option to come back.
Yes, yes.
But they see it as, eh, bother.
And some go into the work world and, and never, never look back.
Could they go to Riverside?
It's full. And there's a waiting list.
So why you don't give me status? I know, that's a whole other.
That's a, that's a, very good statement, but another topic.
This, I mean, the, the bottom line too, and Andy mentioned this, is, is looking at our Alt-Ed and at-risk plan, and what, what services do we provide, and what, how do we plan to be flexible with services so that when student X comes in, we can be flexible enough to meet that student's needs, not it has to fit in, that student fits into a certain program or they don't fit. I think we have to be very strategic in how we plan programming to be flexible for what kids need, because they all need something unique to them, and they all deserve something unique to them. So we have to allow for flexibility within that, to provide services, unless it's something that absolutely, we cannot service for whatever that action was. But we have to also, and that's what our group just met on yesterday, to plan out, looking at our at-risk programming and, and our comprehensive services for how do we truly individualize these unique, you know, exceptions.
You guys, the board received a written report just this past week of why we, we brought back the Alt-Ed and at-risk program to take a more comprehensive look at this. Looking at this data and then looking at policies and having continued discussions, we were like, we're doing a whole lot of things, but is it strategic, is it purposeful, is it comprehensive, and how do we have this all laid out systemically? And so taking a look at the data is really just to take a step back. So you're going to see a more in-depth explanation of the interventions, the programs, et cetera, that we have in place, also focusing on the social-emotional pieces that weren't stressed in this presentation, because a lot of the interventions we do have, we do have are academic, and that's may not what that, that may not be what that student needs. And so we're going to be bringing back to you a more comprehensive look at that later in the spring.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you all for coming. Next, we are to request for future agenda items. Is there anyone that wishes to add anything to the, or wishes to see anything coming forward this body in the future agenda? No? All right. Seeing none, announcements? Anyone have any announcements? Mr. Dito?
Tomorrow night, the League of Buonum and Boarders are having a, how to become a candidate forum at the county courthouse, room sixty. They're really happy, having people from the county board, city council, for some reason, they asked me to show up, and we're going to be explaining about what is entailed with being a, a member of local government, and how you can make that decision that's hopeful to encourage people to run for local office. And that's at seven o'clock.
All right. Thank you. Any other items? Seeing none, could I get a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
Second. Let me have a second.
Yes.
For the purpose of.
Sorry. Adjourn to an executive session for the purposes of considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility under nineteen point eight-five-one C of Wisconsin State Statute A, contract for specific administrator. Sub move.
Second.
Call a roll?
Eliza?
Aye.
Eliza, I'm Iger.
Aye.
I'm Iker.
Aye.
I'm like Ilandberg. Seganak?
Aye.
Seganak, can I leave him off?
Aye.
Leave him off.
Aye.
Do you have I'm motion?
We are adjourned to executive session. Let's take five minutes, and then.